And I would ask the court to please go roll.
Cook.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Odenelli. Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Aaron Scott.
Here.
Bill Scott.
Here.
Womple.
Here.
Wormowski.
Here.
Williams. Ray Ezra.
Here.
Sit and serve the beer.
Here.
Under the merits report that aren't listed, we're gonna do a quick update. Chief Meffer, you're first, and I'll follow by chief's orders. Chief Meffer?
Just wanted to bring up that, it was something kind of last minute. When we, I was at a conference last week. I led to be the state of Illinois has released some grant money that department's involved with. I had put in for a significant amount in the capital improvement this year for in-car cameras. Through this grant, I can get reimbursed for about fifty-five hundred dollars per camera, but I would like to apply for that. I didn't bring a formal request because I need to get rolling on that for tonight. It was past the deadline, but just want to make you aware, we're under no obligation with this grant. If we get it, we can spend it on any make, model, and brand that we want. So we'll be able to go ahead and move forward with the cameras we want to buy. And we're not required to do anything other than apply for the grant in this grant. It's pretty simple, so I wanted to bring it forward to see, make sure it was an idea that you got through.
So you can order before you apply?
Yeah, it's retroactive back to January one of seventeen.
No, a lot of grants are like that, but that's great.
Yeah, and we have budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this in the capital improvement. So if he gets this, this will knock about half of it off, so it'll help everybody.
I'd like to keep moving forward on that before everybody else gets their hands. That's all I had.
Everybody good?
Yeah, real good.
Okay, Chief Sills?
Don't keep it under five minutes without getting into a big long class on pyrotechnics. We've had a request from Jacksonville Speedway to allow a pyrotechnic display out there during a double of the races throughout the season, about eight of them in total. According to state statute, we can allow consumer-grade fireworks in our municipality if we ordinance that and we allow. Given that, we've worked on permitting through the last year with central states to allow close proximity or those consumer-grade products. Now, this is not the big aerial effects like you would see at Fourth of July. These are close proximity, single-box, multi-tool displays is what they are. The distances out there work out to where you'd be within what standards are. But right now, we don't have any ordinance on the books allowing such. So I would need city council approval if you would like me to go ahead and permit him to do that or not, and then work on an ordinance in the meantime to allow that. Now, these are not bottle rockets, M-80s, things of that nature. Those are still outlawed under state law. These are basically 1.4G consumer-grade stuff that you have to purchase from a licensed dealer in Illinois.
Not looking to fall out to the residential area?
No, it has a, basically, you have to have a clear area within a fallout area of two-hundred feet radius of where the show is going to be shot from. So if he shot it in between turn three and four at the Speedway, he would be well within his requirements or his limitations from both spectator stands, any building out there or residential. Like I said, it wouldn't be but eight shows a year and it's just a single-box display. So it'd be over in twenty, thirty seconds probably.
Another first one he's gearing up for is April the thirteenth, Friday night. That's the World of Outlaws. Come to town, and that'll be a sold-out event.
Are they all weeknight, weekend nights?
I don't know.
I would like that.
It's kind of a fad of racing here the last few years, fireworks.
Are we talking about like at the end of the race, halfway through the race, early in evening, late in evening, what are we talking?
I'm not sure.
Well, usually outlaw races, they make a big event at the beginning of the race.
That's the start of the race.
It's the start of the race, they pop the, you know, they have the flag going around on the cars, and they get in line, and it's a big production. So that would probably be approximately eight, thirty, nine o'clock, probably. I don't think at the end, I don't think you'll ever do a show after the races are over at eleven-thirty. I mean.
We get complaints about races running late and everything, you know, the building.
We can have Kenny put something together exactly what.
It's not too late and not too loud. So then while we're looking at changing code, you might want to change the code to actually allow the World of Outlaws race, because I think the way the code is written, they can't do races there before the, up the end of the school year. And we kind of like not enforced it, but it'd be nice to have something in code to actually allow us.
If this ordinance allowing consumer-grade stuff, it also covers the Main Street when they do their shows downtown, because they're still violating the city ordinance. It's on the books right now, they'll shoot you those down there. And that's the same type of ordinance we're talking about. Given that, in the ordinance, you can stipulate day of the week hours from one month to another month, you're fully within your right to lay out how you want it governed.
You can do that, both in the ordinance, you can also do it in the permit for.
That's correct.
Special event, so you should be able to do that.
I'll get you a schedule.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, city attorney's report?
Thank you, I'll cover real quick the two items we have on the agenda for Plans Commission, Front of Plans Commission, I should say. First was a petition for rezoning at twelve-twenty Hundred Avenue. This is the house that Chet and Louise owned, they donated it to the college. College is applying for their public zone like they have for everything else. It's primarily going to be used for office space. There is one sleeping room in the basement that would only be used in the event of a visiting professor or somebody that just for a very short period of time, not extended full-time use. There was NAM's approval, no objections to that petition. The second one is for re-zoning the property at thirteen-twenty Tendik from B3 to R5. This is the property where the old nursing home sits. It is the same group, basically, the Gilmore Estates. It'd be very similar to Gilmore Estates, except that Gilmore Estates, the minimum age is fifty-five. This one is sixty-two, so it'll be a little bit older group. More than any housing authority will manage the property but not own it, like the house's group that was involved in the facet. There were several residents there, and I think Mike did a good job of answering their questions. They may be here tonight. There was one individual who joins the property that spoke against the petition, concerned about the income level of individuals there and more traffic and so forth. This is not low-income housing, and to my knowledge, it's not subsidized housing, you have to pay your own way. So that combined with the sixty-two minimum age hopefully will prevent any issues they may have. None of the residents out there have had any problems at all with Gilmore. So the Plans Commission approved that one, NAM's.
Good, committee reports this evening, Parks and Lakes.
We have one item, Mr. Mayor, and discussion and regulation of the fees for Lake Jacksonville. John Hall's gonna.
We have actually three items that we discussed with Parks and Lakes Committee, and they were full support, and so we're here before you tonight looking to, for first reading of those changes. The first change is changing the resolution that contained the boating, fishing, and overnight camping regs from a resolution to an ordinance. I don't know why forever it's been a resolution, but there is no enforcement unless we have an ordinance. So we want to change that to match the other rules and regulations at the lake. So number one is just we want to change that resolution to an ordinance form, so we have some enforcement there. The second item is there has never been a boat length or horsepower limit on Lake Jacksonville. In our Parks and Lakes meeting, we talked about a twenty-six-foot limit. Then we decided that we would start off with a twenty-eight-foot limit to try to have some control out at the lake because of the erosion and the damage that the big wakes are causing to the lake shore. We're losing a lot of shoreline, we're losing a lot of trees. And down the road, I'm afraid the people that sit here are gonna have a big problem dealing with that issue if we don't have some control now. A twenty-eight-foot boat's a large boat for our little lake. So I'd like to start with a limitation at that point, and then we can always work from there. That's number two. And number three is I'd like to add the rule that, or the rule or the law, I guess you could say, under the other regulations, no motorized vehicles on the new Crimson and Rocket Trails. Because at the end of the season, we had an issue with four-wheelers getting in back there and running around on the trails. That is only a pedestrian and a bicycle trail only back there. So like everything else, you have to make a regulation out of it so you can enforce it. So those are the three items, changing the resolution to an ordinance, implementing a twenty-eight-foot boat rule to preserve our banks, and adding no motorized vehicles to the Crimson and Rocket Trail. Does that sound right?
It does, and if I could add, if you received a copy of the ordinance concerning the fees and so forth, there should be a.
Oh, you're absolutely right. It was a twenty-eight-foot boat limit excluding pontoons. I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you.
The limit on no motorized vehicles on the Rocket Trails, we're trying to stick in every possible position in the ordinances. So not only do we have that for the public campgrounds, we have that for the private, I'm sorry, for the overnight camping as well. That did not appear in the ordinance, but that's where it should be, is item number ten on that, that there be no motorized vehicles on the Rocket and Crimson Trails. And very likely, we may have an encompassing ordinance sometime saying the same thing, because we want to make sure everyone understands you can't have motorized vehicles on that.
Any questions?
Sorry.
How much money do we make off boats buried at twenty-eight feet right now?
Very little. We don't have very many boats that big come out there, but once in a while, when the river's up or down, and on a heavy weekend, you know, we'll get the huge boats. A lot of them have Missouri plates on them, and I don't know where they come from, but they show up at Lake Jacksonville, and they're way too big for our lake. It's not something that happens a lot, but we still need some regulation. You've seen them out there, the big cigarette boats on occasion, and stuff like that.
We're gonna need a second meeting, because the thing we've gotten the most complaints about since we talked about the boats is that we have a horsepower problem on the lake as well, and we don't have a limit on that at this time, correct?
Correct. But we talked about that at the meeting. The little bass boats, a lot of times have big horsepowers, you know, and we really don't want to limit our bass tournaments, you know. Those little bass boats aren't the boats that are causing a lot of the issue.
What'd you find out ultimately?
Kelly? Kelly?
Ain't worried that much on that level.
Where do you determine the actual being the length of the boat causing the erosion
issue versus the horsepower, as opposed to a mile-per-hour limit on the lake as per the number of boats that we allow on the lake?
We have a, I'm sorry.
All these could be issues on this. So I'm just wondering why the length of the boat is what you're looking at?
Well, the length of boat is just based on the size, obviously, and the amount of wake it puts out. Being around boats a lot, I pretty much know, you know, the sizes and lengths of boats and that type of thing. Twenty-eight boat's a big, twenty-eight boat's a big boat. And we already have a thirty-mile-an-hour speed limit established, we have had for years out there. But that, we came up with that amount, and I'd be glad to offer some other examples. Otter Lake, for example, is a seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-acre lake. They have a hundred-and-fifteen horsepower limit. We, by the way, are a four-hundred-and-fifty-acre lake, just for comparison purposes. Like I said, Otter Lake is seven-sixty-five. Lake Bloomington is six-thirty-five. They have a forty horsepower lake limit. Canton Lake is three-hundred acres. They have an eighty-five horsepower limit. Governor Bond Lake by Greenville, Illinois, is seven-seventy-five. They have a hundred-and-sixty horsepower limit. These are some lakes in the Illinois area that are comparable in size to ours, and they all have horsepower limits or size limitations. When you start getting up to like Lake Taylorville is twelve-hundred, so it's almost three size, three times the size of our lake. And they have no limit, and as you go up from there, Lake Vermilion is over a thousand acres, they have no limit. Once you get over the thousand-acre size, your limitations start dropping down. But, you know, most everybody is a lot more restricted than we have ever been, and I just think this is a place to start. A twenty-eight-foot excluding pontoons is a large boat, and I think we can try, see how it goes. But we need to do something about our banks. If you haven't been out there and seen them, is that correct, Brett?
Got a book I can pass around.
We need to start taking some action against the large wakes produced by these boats.
The question I have is when someone shows up with a thirty-foot boat, do the individuals who are manning the boat dock go out and look at the boat, or is it all on the honor system?
They have to get a daily pass, and the people can, they'll either go out, or they can see, you have to pull up right there. You know, a person like that probably is not going to have a season pass when they just come, like when the river's high or low, or something like that.
You boat on the lake, you get a daily pass, show proof of insurance.
And the size and everything is on that daily pass.
And a lot of those big boats won't get a season pass, because it's cheaper for them to pay eleven bucks or twenty-five dollars on the weekend as opposed to that hefty amount for season pass.
Well, I go back and forth with that, because I've been on a pontoon boat with a ninety-horse, and I've been on the same-sized pontoon boat with a one-seventy-five. So it was actually the horsepower that, you know, you get a little bit more kick behind you, you're gonna gun it a little bit more, you're gonna cause more wake. We currently allow tubing and skiing on our lake, correct?
Correct.
So we got outboards, we got ski boats, we got them causing wake all the way around there, hitting the coves pretty tight. That's another issue with the erosion. So it's just not the size of the boat coming in there. We could have a lot of leisurely thirty-footers coming in there, not causing a problem. We could have ski boats coming in there, cranking it all day long, causing erosion problem. So I think when we start looking at something like that, we got, why are we picking one thing to look at, the size? We could limit the horsepower on a boat, I think that's gonna get you a little bit more, but then it's gonna limit your, it's gonna limit your users again. You know, you're gonna limit your bass and your fishing tournaments, you're gonna limit your skiers, you've got a mile-per-hour limit. What about our no wakes? Do we gotta limit from the shore about how far our no wakes can be?
Yes.
I mean, so we got that set out there also. So, I mean, it looks like we're doing a lot, I just, I'd like to take a little bit more look into that before we actually start just saying what size of boat we put on the lake.
And I understand that, Jeff, and we feel it's important enough to start looking into it as an issue. You know, we can, you can kick it around, whatever you choose to do as the council. We feel it's important enough to bring this up. And so we're doing that. We're bringing it up and letting the council recognize that we have an issue out there. We need to look at it.
I understand, I appreciate that. And another question I would have is how many season holders do we have over twenty-eight-foot?
Less than two-hundred.
Less than two-hundred?
No, no, ask the question again.
Over twenty-foot or two-hundred?
Over twenty-eight-foot. How many season holders do we have?
Actually, right now, there's no way to determine that, because we're based off of horsepower. We have three categories, fifty to, zero to fifty, fifty-one to a hundred, and then a hundred-one above. And right now, from a hundred-one, or the bigger category, we're less than two-hundred, you're talking a hundred, I think the last time I looked at was a hundred-and-seventy-two is what we sold last year of those. But that varies anywhere from two-hundred plus up. So you got your bass, a lot of your bass boats are in that category as well.
Yeah.
From what I've seen, being out there every day, I would say we're basically talking about, off the top of my head, probably ten boats. And the bigger issue of it is, is like we were talking about the different boats and everything, the big boats, the big cigar boats, they run down the middle of the lake, which causes your bass fishermen to move over, which causes your pontoon boats to move over, and your john boats. So the big boats are hauling down the middle, and then that wave energy, not only from their boats, is causing everybody else to be sucked up close to the bank, which is causing more damage too. I mean, we're averaging three to five feet on a good year, but what has not been riprap. That's what we're losing right now, is three to five on a bad year, seven to eleven feet. Just depends on where that point is.
What are we doing over the riprap to address the?
We put together a grant, and the state, city put in, this had been probably four years ago, and the city was gonna go ahead and go with it, but the state didn't have any funds for us, so we backed out. But to be honest with you, we've, since we've been in our positions, we've ripraped everything with the exception of one point that I have access to. And we're gonna try to work on that this year, but I have to cut through a subdivision in order to get to that place, to get the riprap place.
Okay, it still doesn't make sense to me, so six boats, because you've said multiple times that we only have six boats probably over this side are causing all this leg damage.
I wouldn't say it's causing all the leg damage, but in order to start the project, if we go in there right now and we decide to put a horsepower limit on it, we're gonna have a lot of people. It's more or less us easing into it, trying to figure out what the best recipe is gonna be to do it. I'm not saying if they're causing, you get a thirty-mile-an-hour wind that's blowing eight hours a day, that's gonna cause as much wave energy as you would a big boat. So I mean, it's a start, something that we're kind of looking into. And to be quite honest with you, a lot of the erratic driving that I've had and complaints are coming from these great, big ski boats with the loud exhaust, even if they have captain's choice or not, they're not running that either.
How many boat permits are sold there?
We're over four-hundred on the fifty and under, roughly a hundred-and-seventy-nine above on the big end, and then the middle sticker, which is a hundred-two, just short of two-hundred, we're probably close to a hundred-and-seventy-five as well.
So a hundred-and-seventy-five on the big horsepower? And what's the highest horsepower that we have?
We have no limit on it, so they can bring whatever they want. That's where it gets hairy, because we, these prices are also brought down into three categories as well, whether you live in Jacksonville, whether you live in Morton County, or you live out of county. So what a lot of people, one of the issues we had last year with the gentleman was he finally caught wind that we were checking stickers, and so that's when they started buying daily pass. His deal was, I'll buy a daily pass for twenty-five bucks on the weekends, that gets me out of having to pay four-hundred-dollar perhaps boat, seasonal boat sticker. And we never, up until Kelly and I started, we never regulated boat stickers. It was all one color, and you know, there's ways to cheat the system, but anyway, that's where that's at.
Thank you.
How much are our boat stickers?
It's based off of horsepower, in county, out of county, and the city limits.
So where are they? I guess it's in the.
It goes all the way out. It's a long sheet.
Well, I just want to drop one at you. You gave me the acreage, what's the deepest depth of our lake in the fetch?
About thirty-one feet.
Thirty-one feet, and what's the fetch, the furthest from one shore to the next shore, the longest spot in the lake? Does anyone know?
West end.
Probably, I don't know, Jeff, I'd have to look, from one end to the other, alongways.
From the furthest shore point to the next shore point, yeah. Would be the longest spot in our lake, do you think?
Right.
East to west?
Maybe half a mile.
How's that fact?
Three hundred yards across.
And see, if you look down for where our shop is located, that is the narrow part of it, the side legs, but as you go west, it opens back up.
Right.
So the problem on the west end is a little bit more serious, because there's more of an area, there's actually a sandbar out there as well that goes, floods water into the spillway.
Right.
So we have to kind of take that into account too, as far as waves and.
And sandbar's not good for erosion at all, it just washes away.
Any other questions about those items that I can try to answer?
How does this affect the boat races that we have out there?
Those little things, the tommies here, they're not, they skim across the water like a.
This would affect that or not?
No, it wouldn't bother that at all.
Okay.
They don't displace, they don't displace water.
They're barely in the water. Almost a cover trap.
April the fourth. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Did you answer the insurance question?
I'm sorry?
Did you find out what's going on with insurance?
No, I can talk to you about that, yes. Not a nagging one, you do that.
Public protection worries.
Sure.
Discuss Jacksonville Police Department surplus property while we're at this time?
We've got a Chevrolet Tahoe that its age, miles, and condition, the maintenance has exceeded its value, just want permission to sell it in the most economic way we can. And also, I've got a lot of surplus property that I've been locating around the police departments and sitting for quite a while. There's twelve laptop computers that are irrelevant. I've talked to Rex and the IT department to see if there is any way to save those for any practical purpose. They can't even be updated, they're that out of, the software is that outdated, so I just want permission to recycle those.
Actually, you could give them to Kelly, maybe for riprap.
And I put, with those computers peripherals, that's just wiring cables and things that go along with it, I didn't want to list every single thing that was with them.
Questions?
Not a problem.
Back up. Thanks, we're planning public works.
I thought I was gonna get by with that.
We have one item tonight, Mr. Mayor, is discuss stop sign at the intersection of Michigan and Harden Avenue.
And we touched on this.
Couple councils ago.
Months ago, but it's, you know, we're getting ready to do a project on Michigan this year, and I know that Chief Mann from the Village has spoken with me, and I figured if we better just touch on it again, kind of help. So Chief, you have anything you'd like to see a stop?
Yeah, we, and guys, I just came up to answer any questions that, we'd love to see the city participate in this, that four-way stop. We don't believe it's gonna drastically reduce speed limits or anything like that. With the city's water plant coming online, there'll be traffic in and out of there more heavy than what's been in the past, so you got, and heavier traffic. Just the fact that if you're coming out of the Village, Michigan is actually a peak, a high point, where you crest there, so we, studies have shown that if you just put a stop sign in, it's gonna cut twenty percent of the traffic down, just on Harden Avenue. People will naturally, they go to wherever the easiest traffic flow is. We'd like, and I'm sure the city would like, for the majority of traffic to be on South Main Street. I mean, that's where it's designed to be. Harden Avenue is, the city's got a little better position on Harden than when you cross over Michigan into the Village, it gets pretty narrow. The pedestrian traffic is, quite frankly, mainly from the city, once the pool opens. We're just trying to control it a little better. I guess our point of it is, from the Village's standpoint, is it's not gonna make any major impacts in, you know, in traffic flow and speed limits, yada, yada, yada. It's something that both communities, I think, can do, and better the traffic control in that area. By doing nothing, you know, are we gonna, I talked to Adam about it, and I think Adam looked up, Chief Meffer looked up the traffic crashes there, I think there was one. So we're not trying to change the world by putting up a trap, or a stop sign here. We're just trying to regulate it a little bit more than what it is. There's a clean shot from Morton Avenue all the way to Van Della and the Village, and people do take advantage of that. Compare that to Clay, we actually have a better street than Harden over on Clay. People, the traffic volume on Clay is seventy percent less than it is on Harden, just simply because there are stop signs on Clay. Nobody's gonna turn on it and just jet clear them to, anyway, just here to answer questions if anybody has any questions, sir.
Has anybody surveyed the neighborhood? Because by doing this, you're gonna have a lot more semi-shifting, changing gears, so right now, they can turn and go in and not make any noise, where if you're sleeping at night, that semi stops there and takes back off, you're gonna have a lot more noise.
Something we have to consider. Okay. Yeah, our houses are a lot closer to the street than yours are.
What does that chief say?
I looked up the last four years of accidents at that intersection, we had one. From an enforcement standpoint, I'm pretty neutral on it. I don't think it's gonna affect the way we do our business, one way or another. If it's just to simply slow the traffic down, I don't know if that's an answer, but if we are gonna have a lot more traffic in and out of our water plant facility there and things, and traffic coming from the South Jacksonville direction is that a blind spot coming through there, I'm pretty neutral on it, actually.
I thought it was our hope that people who would be, once the water plant got up, that people would be utilizing Morton Avenue to come on and off, and we wouldn't necessarily be trying to push them from Main Street down Michigan to the water plant. Has that changed?
You're right.
Okay.
So has?
The traffic's still gonna be coming off of Morton.
When that was the, when the road was blocked off, we had a lot more traffic on East Michigan. That's always been my understanding in talking with the engineers, that that, once the road got back open, that most of the traffic was becoming from Morton Avenue to Harden, and we wouldn't be having a lot of extra traffic on Michigan. Avenue to Harden, and we wouldn't be having a lot of extra traffic on Michigan.
Yeah, as far as the water plant. Cause all, all the, all the chemicals will be coming down Morton.
Turning in Superior or turning on Michigan?
Turning Harden. Turn, turning on Harden.
Morton, and then turn...
Right, I mean, Morton, then you turn at the first left on Superior, or do you turn the second left at...
No, it'll be coming in... Right into the water. On Morton, turning south on Harden into the plant, and then going into the plant off of Harden.
And in reality, they oughta exit the same way, correct?
Yeah, but most likely, a lot of them will probably drop down to Superior, come up Superior, and then back north on Harden. They won't be going south. Essentially, every, all the traffic south of Superior, there won't be anything added as far as the water plant.
So all the traffic you're talking about is a quarter mile from the stop sign that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I actually live on East Michigan. I, I drive Harden quite often. I don't, have we done any type of traffic studies to, how much, how much traffic is there? Now, I agree with you that from Michigan to Wal, um, Van Dalia, the roads are much narrow, narrower for South Jacksonville. I would also agree that we have a lot of foot traffic, um, on South Clay and on Harden, trying to access the playground park. What I'm trying to determine is how a stop sign at Michigan, um, you know, how that, how that...
I think it just gives a reset point, you know, rather than somebody getting on that road off of Morton Avenue and being able to go all the way to, to Van Dalia, uh, it, you know, in the, in the middle of that mix, it gives you one stop to, to stop, restart pedestrians walking in the village at least. When you're leaving that stop sign, you're gonna have a much better opportunity to see pedestrians. We don't really have a dog in this hunt either, it's not gonna solve any major problems. I, I think it will increase safety in that area by twenty percent on the city and the village side, and for us, unless it causes a, a, you know, a problem with noise or whatever, we're not spending anything to do it.
Are you putting, are, has the village already determined to put up, so it'd be a three-way stop at this point?
We would not, the, the village would, we've already made the ordinance to put it up, we would not follow through with it without the city. There's, there's no reason to make that a three-way stop.
So basically, you got two issues here. One is expediting traffic versus the safety of the pedestrian.
Exactly.
And which one would you rather go with?
Well, you won't let us take down the stop sign that needs to come down at Holblin because you're worried about pedestrians. So, I've been sitting in this seat for, for five years, and South Jacksonville has never come here and asked us to be a good neighbor, so in my mind, if they wanna stop sign in their village, and us being a good neighbor is saying okay, then I, I say okay.
I brought up before that this is, by, by you look at the code for, for street design, this is on board a stop sign, and actually putting in a stop sign, they said that in the, the design standards, it actually increases the speed of traffic down, downstream. And there's a lot of truck traffic involved going to either the, the Bookbinding in South Jacksonville, or the, the, the...
Reynolds.
Reynolds. I mean, there's all sorts of trucks there that we're gonna, we're gonna have in stopping, starting in the neighborhood. And as someone who lives on a, a four-way stop, I could tell you it's not fun to have trucks stopping and going by your house all the time. So I've...
Two issues. Action for that traffic or the safety of the pedestrian?
I live right there, and, and I see this every day, the, the traffic on Harden and everything up and down through there is tremendous. They run as fast as they can from Van Dalia to Morton, all the way down through there, a lot of the, the, the employees coming out of Reynolds and, and everything else, it's a, it's a madhouse down through there. A stop sign at this location, the trucks stop anyway, most of the time right in the middle of the road to figure out where they're going. They're trying to, they're trying to go to the, the warehouse right there, and they stop and they turn, and they're sitting at that intersection anyway. So a lot of the traffic, I mean, a stop sign would be a great thing to slow that traffic down, and, and a lot of that traffic that, that pulls up there is trying to figure out where they're going anyway, so I, I, I would like to see a, a stop sign at that location.
But if it's a madhouse, why is there only one exit?
You asking me a question?
Yeah, I mean, you said it's a madhouse, there's lots of traffic and all sorts of stuff, and it's confusing, but there's only, I mean, Chief Recker said there's only one exit.
Well, I can't control the accidents, I live there, I can tell you what the traffic's like.
Is this for boats?
If I could put my two cents in...
We don't have any discussion.
Get rid of my dukes and hat and jumper. Hit the airborne one time and had South Jacksonville car come down there. If I can put my two cents in.
It's hard to sense a jockey for crap on there.
My, after being out there for several months during the construction of Superior, it wouldn't hurt to put one there and down at Superior. Let me tell ya, with construction signs up, road closed signs, it doesn't stop people. People don't read, especially here.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for putting it at the time.
Good to see you all. Thank you, hon. See you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Hey, utility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one item tonight, discuss engineering proposal for the Northwest Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Mark?
We're gonna pull this.
We're gonna pull this.
We're gonna pull it?
Yes. Jeff, Jeff's looking like a...
What are we pulling, huh?
What are we pulling?
Okay, the reason we're pulling this proposal is that was based on replacement on Northwest Street from Douglas to Lafayette. As of Friday, when Jack and I met out on site, he's kind of back and forth about adding some more water main replacement along with that down Lafayette. So, we're pulling this, taking a look at things a little bit closer. In other words, I might've jumped in there a little bit.